Better.
Sure.
I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call attendance.
Okay.
Work. Commission real soon.
Here.
France. List. Fire here. Nelson here. Chair person want to do?
Here.
And Mary.
Here.
Looks like our first item is a request for variance. Two foot variance request to allow an eight foot fence along south property line between the front yard setback and rear property line where a six foot fence is allowed and a four foot variance request to allow an eight foot fence between the front property line and the front yard setback. Our residential zoning district where a four foot fence is allowed. Legal description is lot seventeen cottonwood creek subdivision address three twenty south Amelia street. Location is the east side of South Amelia at its intersection with Mary. The zone district is residential low dense, our low density residential. Current you single family residential applicant is Efren and Heather Delgado. And they are, and they are here. And from there TJ, I will let you give us the information.
Excellent. Thank you all. So I'm just gonna even see the power of the presentation here on your, the both of the screen.
Let's get your voice fixed because it doesn't sound good.
You're very darned.
Okay, I'm gonna turn off my video. We're having some internet issues over here. Is that better? Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Okay Preston, just in case I did email you the presentation, so I might need you to be my page turner. If this ends up not working, but we'll give it the old college track.
He's on the screen here and it sounds zooming like it.
Okay. All right, there we go. So first, as mentioned, we have a fence variance for the height. For lot seventeen, as mentioned. Generally located on the east side of Amelia street at the intersection with Mary street, Marie street. So here's just generally the process that we'll go through. It's very similar to any other public hearing process. Now we'll start with the staff report, then we'll go with the applicant presentation following that and then opening up to public comment. Plan and commission deliberation for the motion and vote. So first, just some background, as mentioned, Efren and Heather Delgado are the owners. The lot is lot seventeen of Cottonwood Creek subdivision. The address is three twenty South Amelia. It's zoned. Our low density residential as shown in the map there on the right and all surrounding zone districts are, are as well. There we go. So again, just some logistics, the applicant has submitted a application hearing or the hearing application, the fee, letter of request, site plan, and some additional photographs for the hearing. Those have all been submitted or included in the packet that was provided to the planning commission. And the public hearing has been notified as required by the Ridgeway municipal code. So as mentioned, there are two requests and sort of jumping ahead when you make motions, we'll want to make motions on both. And they will have to tie back to criteria as this is a variance as opposed to a land use development application. So we do need to tie it back to the standards and, and with findings, quote unquote findings, which a little bit more technical and formal. So first is a two foot variance to allow an eight foot tall fence along the south property line. And you can see this red line on the left hand side of the image. Is, is where that is requested. It's on the, the back portion of the property. And, and also of note, north is down on this map. So it's a little bit backwards of what you might see on an aerial. So that's the first request. We'll get into that a little bit more. The second is a four foot variance to allow an eight foot tall fence also, but in the front yard setback. So the front yard setback requires a maximum of four feet. And, and so this is an eight foot request there. So we'll get into now the analysis of each first, the height. So per the town code, as I mentioned, the fence shall not exceed six feet in general in the zone district and it may only it cannot exceed four feet in the front yard. So what you're seeing in this graphic, and I'm hoping it's coming through. I wasn't able to make it too large for this, but it's also in the staff report. The green line says a match, a maximum of four feet that orange yellowish line is a maximum of six feet. So you can kind of see the requirement for the code juxtaposed with the request of eight feet and, and eight feet. Now I guess you, I would assume, and that's not necessarily the best thing to do, but since the request is only for that rear forty nine feet, there, there may be a gap in there where eight feet is not being requested. So that might be something we'll want to just clarify with the, with the.
There's a sixteen fence there.
Okay.
Just to shut off the town of all the practices.
Okay. Thanks.
So, sorry Chair, you want me to continue?
Keep going.
Okay, sorry. So related to the height, again, this is a little bit of a anomaly or a unique situation in that you could see in this graphic, the property to the south is, has higher natural grade than the property to the north, which is requesting the variance. So the eight feet is measured from the lowest natural grade, and in this case it would be the lower point of the wall. And so it's our understanding that that measurement is it's a four foot wall. Mike Gill, the building official went out and measured it and that's where that, that measurement came from. So then also just as far as fences go, fences in town shall be constructed of, of specific elements. The applicant is stating that it will be of wood and metal materials. The picture that we have here is that non-compliant front yard fence that you could see the corrugated metal with wood trim and, and structure. So the materials themselves do appear to be inconsistent with the, to be consistent with the, the municipal code pending the, the, the height. Also, I think it was what yesterday, Preston forwarded an email that we received from an adjacent property owner. Robin and Tom Parkinson who live adjac- directly adjacent to this home email in support of the, the variance requests. So with that, there's the variance approval criteria are in section seven, three, twenty one. These two items must be found by the planning commission prior to approving a variance. Those are here. One, there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship in the way of carrying out the strict letter of the zoning ordinance. And two, the spirit of the ordinance will be observed, the public health, safety and welfare secured and substantial justice be done by granting of the variance. So those are just the criteria to consider. And so kind of in conclusion, following the review, the application material, staff has is, is recommending denial of both variance requests to allow the eight foot tall fences. Finding that the criteria set forth in section seven, three, twenty one, one and two have not been satisfied by the application. If the planning commission does desire to prove the variances, staff does have some alternative motion language in the staff report and those are, those do include to create, sorry, two conditions that we would include and we can go through those. If, if we get to that. And so with that, here's the recommended motions. Again, as mentioned, we would need a separate motion for each request on this. And with that, that concludes staff presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission might have. Otherwise, we can turn it over to the applicant to discuss the request.
Yeah, I've got a question TJ, the on the material piece, is that specific to any particular part of the fence or is that just fences in general need to be made of mesh pickets or whatever the other one was?
Yeah, it's a, I mean, I it's general and it would apply to all fences. It's a little bit vague. You know, some of the stuff that we've been talking about, about the code in general, I would suggest applies to, to this component as well, where it's a little bit nebulous in how to understand how that applies, but I would interpret those to be applicable to all fences. And, and but I also don't know that it's a strict, it has to be these.
Okay, I just can think of quite a few, it do not, that on material standard, so.
Yeah.
That I know around town. So just a quick question on that.
I think that was updated in the last few years. So I think that's why it is the way it is, but it might be something we'll look at. So yeah, we make it more consistent.
Because again, it's, it seems to be pretty prevalent throughout the town. So, yeah. Okay. And then, I don't know, I guess I just wanted a quick question. It seems like we had a very similar issue to this with Adam and Mountain Medical. Whereas there is a huge variance grade between the two sites. Seems to me we allowed him to go with quote unquote a higher fence on that. You recall that, John?
I remember the application request. I don't remember.
I remember it. And it also doesn't necessarily set a precedent, but the issue was the train being in his backyard. And so he was looking to create some privacy for that.
Well, I understand that, but it was the other issue that I remember was Mountain Medical.
Being so much higher.
Definitely brain change from his site. And so using this this metric as they've got it, starting at the lowest point, I think his fence was in issue there as well, but it was, it was a privacy.
Well, it was, yeah, it was a commercial business in front of it, not a residential area. So I think it's very, it's similar. Yes, it was a great issue, but I think the situation is quite different.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna mention that, that, that was considered in our review and I think the chair hit it right on the head there that we evaluated the adjacent property as being similar in nature as a distinct difference between that request and this one.
Okay.
Thanks TJ.
Yep.
John?
I have a question.
Too many questions for TJ. Thomas, any questions for TJ?
Yes. Yes, I do. Can you hear me okay?
You're fine. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm actually pretty familiar not only with this property, but I'm also familiar with this issue. We, we have a couple non-conforming fences like this in Solar Ranch that, you know, I've seen kind of somehow end up doing the same thing where it's higher in the front setback than it should be. Somehow, you know, I'm sure Mike is way too busy to worry about this stuff, but this one is a little bit unique in, and I'm a little confused by it. I understand, and TJ, hopefully you can clarify this. I understand that the, the front one, they're suggesting that they want it to be eight foot tall because in the diagram figure three, it shows that the neighboring lot is essentially four feet higher than their lot. Kind of where they want their grades to end up. Is that correct?
That is generally correct, but that specific diagram doesn't, but I believe that the, the property slopes from front to back. And so right, if you look at the front hair property line, it's relatively equal, if you will.
Yeah, I hear you. Well, okay. So here, here's the other thing that, so, so that's a little confusing because is there an existing, I was trying to look in these other pictures down below with all the blue fencing. But there, there is no existing fence on the south property, the southern property along their driveway currently, right?
There, there's a, a big tree or two trees and then there's a space of about maybe six or eight feet. And then there is a fence similar, similar to this, but it steps up. So I think it starts at about four feet and then it steps up as it goes back.
But that's south property line, not the driveway as this.
Correct. I don't know whose tree the property, the, whose property trees on.
Right. And so that's the other thing that I'm still trying to understand. Maybe you can help clarify me to, to me TJ is that I'm assuming that, you know, where the blue fencing is shown is the property line that they're talking about, but there's also this non-conforming fence further north. And what's going to happen with those trees there? Are they just going to try and excavate around the tree and bring the grade down? So that you have the difference between the neighboring driveway and theirs, so that theirs is lower? Or where is that transition happening? At the blue fence or at the non-conforming fence?
I will have to defer to the applicant on that.
Sure. Figure seven, front view is the one I'm looking at where it's, it shows the front view. And you can see both fences there, but it's a little confusing. Okay. So maybe we can go to the applicant with that later. And then the other thing I'm trying to understand is, so I, I, I see that there's some potential merit for a request in the front, but I don't understand yet. Is, is it the same argument in the back that the grade of the other property is, is still higher? And that's why they want an eight foot fence in the back part?
Yes.
Go ahead TJ.
I was just gonna say, yes, that's the, the justification that, that we've received.
Okay. And then, so what's going to happen on the fence line that goes on the back, the rear property line that's facing east?
Um, yeah, that is another.
Maybe we refer to them as well on that.
Yeah. And, and I will just mention that, that I had a brief conversation with Mike Gill while I was out there last week. And he had been on site, looked at it and spoke with the, the applicant, the homeowner. And it sounds like there's an ability to move that fence to be in compliance. So I guess with that being said, it's the understanding that any other fence would be able to, would have to meet the requirement of six foot.
So it would step down from eight feet to six feet. Then that's what I'm understanding.
Correct. Yep.
Yeah. All right. Okay. Well, it's still a little wonky in my brain, but I, I got a general gist. And thank you for your comments.
One clarification, when you say a fence could be moved, which fence? TJ.
The fence on the eastern property line.
The back.
The back fence. Yep.
Moved? Why would it be moved?
Again, I'll defer to the applicant, the applicant and owner on that because they had that conversation with Mike Gill.
Okay.
Um, so I believe my understanding right now is that it is too tall because of when it is, or it's not on the, I, I don't remember exactly, but I guess I would just remind the commission that we're talking about a variance on two property, on one property line. We don't have as large a view, if you will, when looking at a variance as you do, as you're sitting in as a planning commission. You can look at compliance in, in other areas of the property, but really we're looking at these two specific requests. The understanding is that the rest of the property would have to come into compliance.
Hey. Sorry. One, one last quick question. What's happening between the two sections of red lines of fencing? It says, doesn't really say what's happening there. Is there some reason that there's no fencing there?
Um, again, I, we'd have to defer to the applicant again. When currently looking at it, when I was out there, it didn't appear that there was an existing fence. It looked like that, it looked like it was being constructed. So again, the, in between, we would it would have to come into compliance with the maximum of six feet. And I don't know if that's an area that maybe is, is higher. So when measuring from the lowest point, it meets the six feet. We would have to get a building permit for these. So there would be some, some additional elements i- if an eight foot fence were approved.
Yeah. Well, if I don't, you know, it seems to me, I, I don't really get it right now, but based on what you just said, maybe it's eight feet in the in the front section, then it steps down to six feet, then it steps back up. I don't know, but I would probably request that if they want to move forward with this, that they provide us with a an elevation showing us what this looks like, you know, with the grades cut in there because it's, it's still a little unclear to me what I'm trying to approve or not. Just as a comment from the trenches here. So we'll see what, we could really see what, what, what the intent is because it's still a little confusing.
Comments?
Well, I, yeah, I will agree that, that the photos figure four through eight in the staff report are, are not very well, four is fine. Five through eight are, are not very helpful. It does appear from the photos that there's a section of, it looks like six foot fence in the blank area between the red lines they referring to Thomas. At least in figure seven issue, it looks like there's a solid, looks like a solid metal fence.
Yeah, I think I see that now. Okay. I got it.
These photos are not helpful and I'm still not clear. Going back to figure three, is that drawing that yeah, four foot wall that holds back the higher natural grade on lot sixteen, is that only in the back of the property then? Or is that where it's, it obviously because of where the town slopes, it's some slopes from the front of the property.
Right.
Butting Amelia street east to basically in the open space of Cottonwood Park, Cotton Creek subdivision. So that drawing is in on the back part of the property. Is that right TJ?
It's gonna be the maximum amount. Yeah. So I would assume in the back there.
But again, the pictures that aren't terribly clear in the
Correct.
five through eight, particularly like seven, it sure looks like there's no it would, well, no, but very little grade difference there between lot sixteen, lot seventeen. Do I, it's I, I think I think we should let the applicant speak, but I, I think the thing that we at the planning commission not just remind everybody that we need to, because this is a variance request, it's quite specific that we have to use the criteria for variance as, as the basis for our decision. So I think that's the most important thing, despite how confusing the photos.
Yeah. And if I may, one more hopefully clarification there is that the code currently requires a maximum of six feet. The request is to go above that up to a maximum of eight feet. That does mean that somewhere in there, there can be between six and eight feet. And so if approved, we, we staff would be reviewing a permit and getting a lot more information. So it's, it's the height in, I want to sort of say in general, right? That maximum height that's being considered.
Right.
Are we getting any questions? Open it up to the applicant to present.
Okay, let me see. So.
Well, to answer your question first, so we had a fence built in the back backyard and we didn't know until after they put the post in that it was actually on the city lot. So the previous fence, the previous owner had it on the city lot. And so when they told us because when the guys built the fence, I guess it was like six foot and six inches. And we needed to drop it six inches. And we're like, well, let's go ahead and just tear everything down and move it back onto our land. And then our land has like some a retainer.
Was higher from the other.
It has a retainer wall holding the dirt up. And so we moved the fence back and it halfway built right now because they were there today putting the fence and measuring to make sure it's at the six foot. So the back is taken care of. And as for the front, that was there when we bought it. That picture that was showing how it's like, I guess it's like five foot tall, that like metal wall on the driveway. So that was there when we bought it.
Oh, you didn't put that in?
We didn't put that fence in. And then when you're talking about the three trees and there's no fence there, we are planning on doing the same fence that's across the street from us.
She's like a pickens opens, so you'll see through.
So those are your trees?
Yes, those are our trees.
To the south?
Yes. And then, so it's our driveway, the trees and then Lucy's house where we're putting.
And then she has the fence that steps up. Um, yeah.
Yes. So on the front, we know one eighty eight foot tall fence. We already did the four and the six.
The city.
Do you guys decide the request? So the only thing we're asking now is for the back, not the back this side.
The back, the back side.
And then you take some, oh, there's some pictures right here.
So with that one, it's a more of the grade of how the houses sit because her house sits higher than our house. And the fence on her side, the fence is like almost a four foot fence. So when she's on her back patio and we're at our kitchen dining table, we could see her. I wish I would have took a picture of her waving. And then also when we're.
Well, we have some pictures because they're already down the fence with the six foot. So could you, could I show you these pictures?
Who wants, yeah, who wants to go first? I'll go first.
So see, those are the picture, the six foot fence and you can see over half right there.
Uh huh.
That's in the back.
That's the back.
The side back.
Yes. So that's the only way we asked you.
So you're already gonna put the one in the front lower. You have, oh, it's down six.
Four and so it's six.
For the fifteen, so the fifteen feet in, it's four feet.
Yes.
But we didn't do the very front panel because we gotta.
We're gonna do pickets on the, so that's easy to see.
So that little front panel right on, on the edge of your driveway, you're taking that out. You're doing something different there. So that fence by Lucy's house is actually also your fence, the one that steps up.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
But that was there before too.
Okay.
So the only one we asked is choose the back for a privacy.
And so you're on the low side. So the high side, it would be high on her, it would appear high on her side.
Yes. So that's the only one we asked.
Well, again, but at the same time, if it's truly that four foot in that one diagram, which we know it's not all that, but it should only appear four foot high on her side. It would be eight foot high on their side.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. So there, like I said, here's a picture.
All, all it's doing is gonna provide her with privacy, us with privacy. Cause she does like a lot of crafting and sometimes she'll like bring out like her little crates and stuff. Like when we first moved in, I was like, oh, there's a lot of stuff out there.
Suddenly eight foot on, on your side.
Yeah. So and she, she.
So yeah, choose that back.
The official presentation was really confusing. Yeah, I did too.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, Lucy came out always talking to us about. She, if we were coming, because she couldn't make it, but she was gonna be here, but something came up.
She was coming in support of it?
Yeah, she was coming in support of it, but couldn't make it.
Yeah, so on, on her side will be six foot, and our side will be.
She did, she paid for half for this variance application, and we paid for half, so.
This became much clearer, yes.
But still, still confusing in that, I think what this really points out is a. Sort of a discrepancy, but.
Yeah, so I go here on the inside the eight floor.
That's all you're asking for is the bad one, not the front. Can we go to that little green drawing? Because that shows a four foot retaining wall, and I think you guys are telling me it's two feet.
It's two feet in some places.
Okay, okay.
So it's somewhere between two. I mean, there's, what I'm, what I was starting to get at is, I do think. The code needs to recognize. Challenges like this where there's such a discrepancy between grades on neighboring properties. Because on one side it is a four foot fence, and on one side it's an eight foot fence.
With the clarification, I don't have an issue with it, especially with both neighbors in support of it, that the fence is sharing the space between. But we have to show a card to ship.
So now, could, could I show you something else?
Yeah, sure.
So since we have already the fenced finish. We would like to put, if you guys approve, of course, the two feet like this on top of the original fence, it's already now.
Okay, so where, where I'm still confused is, staff's telling us that the, the fence is already built. And it's built in a non-conforming way, it's, it's eight feet.
No, that was the, the one in the back backyard, the one that's being.
Well, that's not what the staff report says, I believe, maybe we can get TJ to clarify, but. Are you, are you hearing this TJ? It, it sounds like the, the applicant's saying that they have. Remedy the problem on the front set, front side setback to. Front yard setback on the side, south side, and that that's only four feet now.
Oh, the one in the front? That, that one was built before we moved in.
No, but the, the section in red there that says eighteen feet.
Yeah, that was already four.
Yeah, it's four.
That's new. You've dropped it to four feet since staff was last out there, it sounds like.
Well, they just finished it yesterday.
So there is.
At one point it was eight feet.
No, there was nothing there. Yeah, there was nothing.
Okay, so the staff is just.
There is a fence here that is not four feet, it's five feet, but it was there when we bought the place.
Yeah, that was the existing place.
The, with the metal corrugated that's up against the driveway?
Yeah, that's, that's the one in the picture.
What is the material that you're building, the top that you just showed us?
Is it a wire mesh? Well, I'm, I'm more confused than, than before. I guess.
Um, when you drove by this evening, we were in the backyard putting up that mesh fence. Because they tore down the fence, it was like six inches above limit. And because it was on the city lot, we moved it inward, and so it did go up because of the retainer wall. And they did do that one at six, so that one is being filmed.
Hey, John, I, I think there might be two non-conforming walls is why it might be confusing. It sounds to me like the back rear wall that she was just talking about was on town property and six inches too high, which now they've revised. But there's still.
Yeah, that's not part of this application, that's, so that, that's fine, that's irrelevant. Because the only thing that's part of this application is the forty nine feet of eight foot fence. Along the rear property line between sixteen and seventeen, and the eighteen. On the front of that same property line. They're saying that the eighteen feet from the front yard side back, side, front yard setback to the street. Has been fixed and that that's now at four feet. And then all they're asking for is to go to eight feet in the back, and it's not eight feet now, it's only at six. So we have a discrepancy between what staff is telling us in staff report and what you guys are claiming. So I think the only way, and I'm not, I'm not saying you, you're not correct, I'm just saying, because of that, if we're gonna. Move to approve, we have to make it conditional upon staff going out there confirming. Side conditions. That the property owners claim. Which I could be okay with, it just. It sounds like it may need to come back to us, but that's okay too. TJ, is that your understanding?
Yes, yes, I. Yes, I think that that would be a, a good condition. The other thing that I might throw out there is that we were under the impression that the. Eat the front yard request was for that existing fence. This one, and since this is, if so desired, the. Commission could also condition the, the approval that this fence come down. The, the non-compliant. Five foot fence in the front yard. Because it is non-compliant. Does the applicant want that still to be there? I'm a little confused about that too.
Uh, we don't want anything to do with that.
Yeah, I was thinking that one would be like grandfathered in. Those are previous owners that had. So, you know how you guys were talking about that there's a gap between the front and the back, the previous owners built that and the other fence.
Okay, so what?
And we were just trying to match what was already there.
So TJ, it sounds to me like this is a. Existing non-conforming use.
Yeah, and so this is getting even more convoluted from, from my perspective as well. I, I was unaware of that, we were unaware that there were existing conditions, existing non-conformities. So yes, if they are non-conformities or grandfathered, that, that's fine, as is. The applicant is requesting something new, therefore the property, the elements would have to come into compliance. So if that, if that side property line fence. Exceeds six feet, a variance would be required, regardless of who put it in and when. It would have to come into compliance with the standards for this approval.
E- even though they're not asking to change this portion of the fence, they're only trying, they're, they're asking to. Get an approval for a totally different section of fence, you, your.
I would suggest that this request would lose the grandfathered status of that portion of the fence.
So you guys understand what, what he's saying is that the code allows for. Basically grandfathered, non-conforming uses, but it always says whenever somebody comes in and wants to make a change. That voids the non-conforming use and makes it have to be brought back under conformity, so. And that one would have to be brought to four feet, I think.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and you say it's about five now?
I think.
Yeah, because they're in that all the way down, because on the other side has like a lot of dirt just sitting right up against it. Yeah, they kind of like built like a little flower bed and it steps up.
Oh, I, I just want to jump in again, so I apologize, I'm a little confused here too again. But the way I understand it is if there's this fence that we're looking at in the picture on the screen right now. And then there's the big trees right to the south of it. And then to the south of that is the property line, which is where you guys want to put the, the fence application. Or, or, you know, that's where you want to put the new fence, so. What's, what's the intent behind the, the fence we were just looking at? Is that supposed? Do you want it to be removed, ultimately, so you can see that, do you want to leave it there?
If we have to drop it to four feet, it would just have to be trimmed off on the top. Just because on the other side, there's a lot of dirt, and if we overmove that.
Okay. Essentially, what you guys are talking about is happening to the south of the trees, and this is just in a, an extra little problem here. And you're willing to drop this down to four feet to deal with grade and, and, and make it compliant, is that correct?
Yes.
Great, okay, thank you for clarifying that, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, in the future, we need to go out there or have better photos or something, this isn't working.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a unique case in that things are. Being changed as we're dealing with this, things changed since.
If you guys wanted to like postpone it to next month and wanted to walk by, I'm almost at the day.
Well, if, if we did that, that might be a good idea, we'd have staff. Come. Mike at the very least, maybe Preston, go out and just verify the side conditions, verify what you're, you want to do. And then we could bring it back next month, but I'm, what do you think?
And I'm kind of hesitant to make them lower that front fence until we actually see what's going on there. Just because they're requesting something on the back to change something existing, we're not even looking at what's going on there.
Well, but there is the, the, it's standard operating procedure to, whenever there's a non-conforming use, then it has to be brought into conforming. Changes is instigated, so it's, I know it seems like it's a hardship, but it. That the goal is to get any non-conforming uses out there, brought into conforming whenever we can. Does that make sense?
Yeah, oh, I get it.
I like the approach you detailed, there was clearly a lack of communication or some misinformation on what. What the goal was, so I think a continuance.
Then, I'm, I'm for the continuance, the one other issue I would like. To somehow or another address is the material. Again, this is, what they're doing is consistent with what was already there, which was never flagged as an issue before. Supposedly, it's not consistent with our guidelines, although there are fences like this all up town. So I would like to see if we can make some accommodation for that as well, and potentially address that in our, in our codes.
Okay, noted by staff. I think we probably still need to allow public comment.
I'll open it to public comment.
Took a long time. I'm familiar with that project, I walk by there every day, I've been there for twenty years.
Just identify yourself.
Two ninety five South Mary Street, I walk by Lucy Booty's house. And those folks' house along South Elizabeth. Every day, and my personal opinion is, in the back, that forty nine feet, it's a no brainer. As far as privacy is concerned, because her garden is that much higher. In their backyard, and every time that she's out there, and I've been on that property, I can see straight into their little. Uh, area, seating area out back on the porch, and I think that the town should. Grant that if you're concerned about how it looks compared to the six foot fence along the eastern portion. I can suggest that maybe you start with, on that corner right over here. You would start with six feet to match the height from this, and then gradually step up. The same way, sort of in, or in cohesiveness with this property over here, and it gives them. Of course, more shade on the side in here, but that's that problem. And that side over there, I'm not familiar with that property at all. If I walk up the street. All I see right now is that the wall poster set hardly is in there in the visuals from here. And if I walk down the street, it's hardly visually, uh, uh, exclusive. Now, on the other side of the street directly across has been a fence put in that's all made out of metal, exactly up to six feet. I'm not necessarily sure, you know, I have a eight foot fence made out of wood, and I'm not so sure. How metal is really the western look that we're supposed to have some kind of in town. So it just seems a little bit modern to have some metal fences between houses, but those are the times and those are the changes.
Slow maintenance.
Well, yeah, that too, but it's hard to for, to have access, if you needed access to the fence for fire issues. You'd have a hard time getting through there, then you have to cut it all up, so there's some safety issues to be considered there, but. I think that's a little bit extreme, so I'm in favor of granting that. Instead, that section guaranteed Lucy's garden and their garden, and again, in the front. Do, as you think is right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? On Zoom? A closed public comment? Um, do the commissioners want a continuance on this, or are you running it to approve the rear side request?
I, I think a continuance makes good sense, and the applicant is, is stated their willingness to, to have this continued. So that it can be reviewed in more detail by staff and come back next month with a very. Accurate, detailed assessment of the request. So I, I will go ahead and move that we continue this until the next, until the October, late October.
I'll second them. Karen, can we get a real call vote on this? Commissioner Nelson?
Hi.
Nelson?
I. Meyer?
I'm Mayor Clark.
I'm.
Chairperson, what do you?
Sorry about the confusion, thanks for coming.
Okay.
So we'll continue it for next month, I believe it's on the twenty fifth of October. And we'll have a clear report to be able to, to go by, but it sounds like it's going well if everything is as you presented.
I am home most of the day, if you come knock on my door, knock on it loud, I might be upstairs painting.
Okay. Yeah, I'll come and look at it, I've driven by, but I'll come and look at it more closely, so we know what we're talking through the gate and walk through and, okay. Thank you.
But thank you very much.
Just scrolling to the next item, it's still here. That's correct. We have approval of the sketch plan to create a mixed use plan due to development and subdivision plan. Legal description, lot three, Ridgeway Land Company subdivision, town of Ridgeway, county of URA, state of Colorado. Address, none yet. General location, east of highway five fifty on the northwest corner of Hunter Parkway and Red Cliff Drive. The zone is general commercial with P. PUD, current use is one commercial building and vacant. I believe everyone knows where that is, that one commercial building would be the RE/MAX building. The applicant is Jack B. Young and Joseph Nelson to build Ridgeway LLC. And the owner is Rob Hunter, managing partner, Ridgeway Land Company, L L L P. TJ?
Okay, so sorry, I'm gonna leave my video off still to make sure that I don't lose. The connection, so as mentioned, we have a sketch plan in front of us for lot three PUD. And there we go, so again, here's the general process, we'll start by the staff report. And the applicant will give a presentation following. A lot of this stuff you, you just mentioned, chair, so I won't go through it. Zoning, though, is general commercial with the PUD over.
Uh, zoning though is general commercial with the P U D overlay. Um, and the applicant has submitted, uh, all the required materials. The application was being complete. And the public hearing, uh, was noticed as required. This application does have some history that's spelled out in the staff report. With a couple of continuances and, and early on informal discussion with the planning commission, uh, towards the end of last year. So there, by way of background, uh, that's in the staff report. Um, so by, uh, just in summary and, and, um. May remember that the last time that this application was in front of the planning commission. Uh, there was a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion and guidance, uh, in, in the location of certain uses. Um, increasing the commercial use, uh, on the property. Pushing, uh, the residential uses away from the, uh, highway frontage. Um, looking at the view corridors and the Pondo's, uh, just to the north of this. And on this layout that we're looking at here, north is, you can see the north arrow in the top right of this. Snip, but it's generally to the, the kind of the top and left is north. Um, so we have a, a different layout being proposed. Uh, it with this application, um, excuse me. The, the modifications include changes to the land uses, various internal circulation, as you can see, uh, parking aisles and drive aisles. Uh, utility alignments have changed. The accesses have changed and the dimensional standards have, have shifted. Uh, this request includes, uh, four areas that have not at this point been defined as lots. But that's, uh, staff's recommendation that they'll be, uh, subdivided into lots. Uh, and different approaches to, to the actual property lines, uh, will, will be considered through the next processes. If this does proceed, um, but there are basically four areas. First is the mixed use center. And that's those four area, those four buildings, kind of that quadplex right in the middle of the, uh, map. There's similar apartments of the mixed use, which is the blue. On the, uh, highway five fifty side, there's the town affordable site. That's the yellow. And brownish kind of on the south portion over by Hunter Parkway. Um, and that includes, uh, both tab, proposed units to be owned by the town as well as privately owned. Units, uh, all of that would be, uh, deed restricted as proposed. At the moment. And then lastly is the RE/MAX building, which is on that, uh, bottom right of this graphic that we're looking at now. So those are generally the four areas. Uh, and then of course the green space and the parks, the, the kids park, that's kind of on that, uh. Bottom left of this drawing. It's not necessarily an area, but an amenity and a, a feature. Um, so we. Looked through the whole process, this project against the applicable standards. First, the comprehensive plan, uh, I think are the master plan goals. Uh, again, we provide a lot more in-depth analysis in the staff report as well as a list of, um. Goals and, and policies that, that we feel are applicable here. But here's a few of the main ones, uh, maintaining existing trail, uh, along the trail easement. Enhancements to the gateway corridor as well as, uh. Affordable housing, employee housing for local workforce. And then, um, uh, how to maintain owner occupied residences. So a lot of it spurs on that. Connections to cross fifty, five fifty, um, the walkability town center component as well as affordable housing. As mentioned, the, the majority of this property is currently vacant and undeveloped. Uh, with the RE/MAX building on that southwest corner, uh, the proposed uses in general and, and. The application that was included, uh, in the staff report goes into a lot more detail on that. Uh, and so does the staff report into that analysis, but, uh, it's looking for a lot of. It's proposing ground floor commercials that includes retail and restaurant uses. Um, apartment and condo, uh, uses are being proposed. Now, from the code standpoint, whether it's apartment or condo, um, it's still being viewed as multifamily dwellings. That's five or more units, uh, in a building. So that's, uh, essentially how we would look at it from a use standpoint in the code. The kids park and the dry well is proposed in the northwest portion of the property. And that, uh, is for drainage, uh, stormwater conveyance and, and water quality management as well as a, an amenity for. Uh, the residents of this development as well as, uh, adjacent developments. There, there's some connections made, trail connections. Um, the same concern that we've brought up multiple times in, in recent applications, one of the biggest concerns. Uh, from an overall town perspective is, uh, this project does eliminate significant square footage. That's dedicated for commercial uses right now and transfers those over to residential. You know, so it's a prime location, uh, in town. Um, and, and it's reducing the amount of commercial square footage, uh, from what's. Currently proposed. In the current P U D. So then going into dimensional standards, um, so what we do is review it against the proposed zoning and the underlying zoning. Again, at the sketch plan level, it's very difficult to do that. Um, and, and since it's a P U D, we anticipate this, uh. If this does proceed, it, it would be written into the P U D to allow the types of buildings and the setbacks that are being proposed in the sketch plan. Um, but these right here are what you'd be looking at from the underlying zone district classification. So. All in all, you know, um, the densities are there and we would make the dimensional, uh. The dimensional standards meet what's being proposed. All in all, uh, with this application, we had, uh, these renderings provided, these hand drawings. For the elevations. So the top is the mixed use center. Um, so that's that middle area. Everything is being proposed at, uh, you know, under the thirty-five feet, which thirty-five feet is allowed by conditional use in the G C zone. Um, with a ma- maximum of, uh, twenty-seven feet. So, uh, these are all within that allowance. That would be if proceed, if it were to proceed, be included in the P U D, um, as well. So. This is just some, some graphics and I'll let the applicant talk a little bit more about that. But, uh, they're, uh, holding off on doing some more digital rendering until the concepts are. Uh, agreed upon or, or allowed.
TJ, are those doors on the bottom on that photo garages?
I believe that they are garages. Yes. Again, we don't really have a whole lot of, uh, information at the moment. Um, we'd let the applicant respond to that during their presentation. Um, yeah, it could, it could be the commercial space as well.
Yeah, that's what just was said.
Yeah. Um. So the setbacks, uh, again, as I mentioned, we evaluate that during the P U D landscaping. Uh, they're not providing a landscape plan currently. One would be required, uh, at the next step. They are rec, uh, proposing four point one acres, pressing it at forty-six percent of green space. Um, the breakdown of that has not been provided, uh, whether it's trails, whether it's going to become an open space, whether it's, uh. Community space, public space, uh, those types of elements have not been provided. Uh, but that is a pretty significant amount of, uh, open space and green space, uh, just in general. Uh, moving to access is the act, there is the one access. It's existing from Hunter Parkway that would be e- existing and continued. Um, and three from, uh, Red Cliff Drive on that kind of east side. Internal connections, um, it depends on the, the classification in there, but it's somewhere between thirty feet and twenty-four feet of pavement. Um, we'd have to do a lot more analysis of that, how to view it, since it's a parking lot as well. Um, so we would, uh, again, that's what's being proposed on the plan as submitted. Uh, if it was to proceed, we'd need a lot more data or information and standards or dimensions. Shown on what those look like and how that traffic, uh, circulation might function. Um, and then of course, we've talked about multiple times being that there should be the consideration. For, uh, addition for, for safe pedestrian crossing highway five fifty, uh, this property aligns with. Uh, an area across five fifty that's already been designated as kind of a landing area. Whether under or over, uh, five fifty for pedestrian connections. So that's just a consideration. That will have to be, uh, discussed or continued to be discussed, uh, in connection with this project. Excuse me. Uh, so parking, um. So the code requires, you know, one space per dwelling unit other than single family and duplexes. So all of these would be multifamily. There's seventy-six of them. So, uh, that would be seventy-six parking spaces. They're also proposing seven hundred and eighty-eight square feet of general retail and five thousand four hundred square feet of restaurant. Um, and, and for that total is two hundred and fifty parking spaces required. Now that's, they, that breakdown is by use. The table here is broken down by area. Um, so again, between those four areas, what's being provided first, what's required? And you can see the difference there that they're providing, um, over seventy-four parking spaces. Over, providing seventy-four parking spaces over what's required. Again, as we get into the nitty gritty of, uh, areas and, and uses that might shift. But that's where it's, that's what's being proposed and, and in the, the submitted plans. Um, utilities, last section here, uh, water service, there is some concern. Um, we have not received a whole bunch of data or, uh, calculations on the water demands. Um, so staff does have, still have some concerns that, that. That the, the, the water demand is going to be significantly higher, uh, than the current projects, uh, as propos, as, um. Entitled the moment with all the commercial uses, uh, but we'll need to get those calculations. Um, and so that's, other than that, uh, the alignments, the easements, um, the waterline extensions are all being. Proposed currently, um, the plans that were submitted were a little bit difficult to decipher. But general alignment seemed to be, uh, okay. And a lot more detail will be provided at next phases, um, both the plan and profile where we'll be able to understand a lot more. About the alignments and make sure that they're all within easements and all the other standards associated with, um, design and construction are able to be met. Um, and then the sewer, uh. Service again, there's, there's, uh, some concern about adding the, this amount of load to the lift station. And, and we'll need to evaluate that through the next phases of this project. Um, and this project might warrant, warrant additional improvements. Similarly, there, there are some improvements going on, on the opposite side of the highway that this project might be able to, uh, connect with. And, and we'd like to make sure that those are being connected, uh, in where possible, gravity, uh, sewer is being used. So that's. On the utility, you get a lot of that stuff just at this point. Um, utilities are difficult to evaluate at this moment, uh, at this point in the process. Uh, and if it does move forward, we'll need, staff will need a lot more, uh, engineering studies and reports, uh, to evaluate the impacts. So public comments, we haven't received any, uh, to date. We did on the staff review, you know, for the sketch plan. We provide basically the staff review comments within the staff report and kind of incorporate those into our, uh. Our recommendation. So you'll see in the staff report, uh, all of staff comments. Based on our review. So with all of that, uh, after reviewing the application and submitted materials against the code requirements. Um, staff does recommend, uh, planning commission recommend, uh, sorry, approve. Um, the lot three to build Ridgeway sketch plan incorporating staff review comments into the finding. Um, in, and therefore that would include a condition in this recommended motion. Um, that would, would state that the applicant shall adequately address staff review comments prior to the middle of the preliminary plan and preliminary flat. And so. With that, I'd happy to answer any questions. Um, and I believe that the applicant is there, hopefully in the audience to. Answer or to present the file as well.
Thanks. Yes, the applicant is here. I'm going to open it for commissioner comments for TJ first, and then we'll let the applicant present. The commissioners have any comments at this moment?
You, I'd like to just ask a quick question of TJ, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Um, just one quick clarification. I'm a little confused on the, the original drawing that you guys had up there with the. You know, kind of the overall site plan. I am a little confused. Can you tell me what's going on with building A and building B? Because it appears that there's parking going.
Yeah.
That, is that over the parking?
Um. I don't know at the moment.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine. Just look.
Our question for the developer.
Yeah, that, that looks a little weird, but maybe it's just that it goes over. I don't know. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, that was one question and. Uh, oh, ju- just to clarify, you know, you, you mentioned when, when someone had asked what was, uh, um. Happening with those blank areas in the elevations and someone wondered if it was garage doors and you wondered if it was the, uh. Um, commercial spaces. Uh, I just want to make sure I understood you felt like. The applicant wants, uh, to. Take away some of the amount of commercial spaces that, that could be realized and, and exchange those more for housing. And that that was maybe a detrimental thing. Is that what I kind of felt you were saying? Because we, we don't want to give up more commercial space. Is that kind of what I'm thinking? Or you heard, I heard?
Yes. Um, you know, we've had a, an ongoing dialogue for, uh, over a year now about a lot of the requests. That are coming are rezoning or, um. Changing properties or, or putting more residential prop, uh, uses on property rather than commercial. And what that does is, um, you know, one decreases the local jobs available as well as the tax, the sales tax revenue. Um, so it's just been a, a concern that has been brought up by the staff, planning commission and town council. That there's appears to be, um. A, a shift from, or, or a lot of the commercial and industrial properties seem to be changing over to residential. Um, and we just want to make sure that we're aware of that.
Right. And that we maintain a, a degree of balance, obviously.
Correct. Yep.
Housing for our community, but also, you know, providing enough commercial spaces for jobs and all that. Okay. Thank you. Um, that's all I needed to know. I appreciate it TJ. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. I have questions. Go ahead. Um, TJ, so right now, this is a general commercial use zone, correct?
Yes, with a P U D overlay. Yep.
Okay, so the mixed use makes residential. Where does that come in? Are we trying to approve it to mixed use to add the residential?
Um, so it would be an amendment to the P U D component of it. So the, the general commercial zone district does allow multifamily units. Component of it, so the the general commercial zone district does allow multifamily units. Multifamily use, the P U D, the current lot three P U D. Does not allow residential uses, there's a there's an explicit note in there that says that residential uses shall not be allowed. So that would be a a P U D component. And and also just of note. In order to be allowed in a P U D, it has to be allowed by either use by right or use for conditional review. In the underlying zone district and all of the uses proposed meet that classification.
So we need a safe building, I I guess I'm confused when we talk about the building, I think, general commercial allows thirty five. But mixed use would be residential height.
Wondering if there's just a confusion between land use and zoning district. So when we look at building height, we look at the zone district and the zone district underneath would be the general commercial. And I believe that allows for up to thirty five feet as a conditional use. So the P U D would essentially be. If if approved, you know, through many, many more processes, would establish that the building height could go up to thirty five feet. And that is an allowed component in the underlying zone district, therefore could be allowed in the P U D.
Okay, but the.
Really confusing.
Yeah, the building has residential.
That's independent. That zone has like restrictions independently.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions as of yet.
Not yet.
I will invite the applicant up to present.
Have your evening. Let's see, where to begin? I need to answer some of the misunderstood components, probably looking at. Page forty six, Preston, your page forty six.
Sir Preston, do you want me to pull that up and run it?
Yeah, if you don't mind, please.
Okay, sure thing. Oh no, you want the.
Or your page forty six.
In the entire packet.
Correct.
I don't have that hold up. Sorry, I'll pull it up, keep talking, I'll get that up in just a second here.
Okay, well, first of all, you know, this is another iteration of the design effort to. Find something that fits the town's needs for this parcel. This parcel's been basically undeveloped and not viable for approximately thirty years, as you all know. And I've been working with that parcel for probably twenty years. Various iterations, possibilities, John probably is one that remembers way back. And. You know, this is. A version of what I think can work really good for. The parcel itself and for the town benefit. I do believe that mixed use is the way to go nowadays, it's it's one of the only ways to make. I don't believe this town can afford or plan to build ninety two thousand square feet of commercial. I just don't think that's a viable option, our new world today. I think we're we're working from home, and yes, we do need more. Say call it restaurant space, retail space and such. But I think some of the best uses, and especially after listening to some of the comments in previous meetings. About wanting to really utilize the density available on this project for its highest and best use. You know, I just basically came up with. Another version from where I was at the last meeting. I think what I heard at the last meeting was. There was more interested. More consolidated dense town plaza. And that's basically what comes up, you know, in the conversation right here. This whole center portion here, it's. Three hundred feet, three hundred feet, so compared to a football field each way. Some of the comments I heard at the last meeting were lights and public space. Town center scale public space. So just to give you an idea, the north, I mean, the east and west running. Space between these buildings is eighty feet. And to give you a reference of that kind of distance, that would be if you're sitting at provisions. Walking in their front door and walking in the front door, the gates on the other side of the street, that's eighty feet. Except, no road, no vehicles, this is meant to be totally public space. With lots of greenery that separate the buildings from each other. This space running this way is fifty. So just kind of bring a perspective on scale, okay? I think just while I'm here. I believe that the roadway and the traffic circulation is probably the best outcome for this parcel. I could come up with, it's very important that this alignment of alleyway on trail here. Down the rest of the subdivision is lined up with this intersection. You can't have these offset. Left and right turns and such, but then from there. I don't believe it's a conversation, it was a public comment about too many driveways on this side. Now. I have a map. Pull out to show you that it's. I consider it to be a very appropriate number of. Outlets, I guess I can pass it around, you'll see that across Red Cliff Circle there. There are four driveways in the same distance.
Over here.
Yes, and now these are, you know, they happen to lay out. Not directly across from them, which I think is a good thing, but I just wanted to bring that up because it was. TJ also had a comment about. This stacking to the signal with C dot, and I believe. That that's gonna be okay with C dot, and there are some alternatives, and we do have to go through that.
When you say stacking, you mean aligning it with the existing Palomino Drive?
No, stamp, stamp.
Traffic structure.
Stacking where cars are backed up as a signal and they're exiting here. And that's one of the reasons I took kind of a main thoroughfare through two points here. To be able to exit onto Red Cliff Drive when there is too much stacking here, if that occurs. And I've worked with C dot for about twenty two years in this region. And I believe this will work. And that will come out in the balance of the engineering work. Okay, so moving on. Couple of things I want to point out, it's a little bit. Maybe scattered, but I'd like to do it well, this is up. One of the things I was paying attention to, the comments from the public and the neighbors. This distance from the walkway. Along the irrigation channel and the condos. This is two hundred and eighty feet from the building. So again, that's almost a football field, isn't it? And if anybody. To reference that as you're driving by, you want to go out and take a look, there's a fire hydrant right here. That exists, so we can see a fire hydrant out there. At about that distance away, you can see how far away this is. And in the, I would say in the balance of the process moving forward, we can put up story polls. For the public to see, but I think. And this had a lot to do. You know, with previous comments made. That we wanted to try to consolidate density and still help create open space, you know, or as you see all of this. Is open space here. Another aspect of this is. This beautifully, as you're heading down the highway. That's. Three hundred and twenty feet, I think it says, it's really close to that, but it's like a football field long. So this open space is gonna direct eyes back into this commercial. Which I think is. An advantage. And then to answer this question, this is a under, it's not underground, it's first floor parking. So, and then the these orange parking spaces. These are accounted for the condos upstairs. This red color is all the commercial spaces or the parking spaces need for commercial use. Looking this over here, and then these spaces here, this yellow color. Also called is affordable site, blue, and that's the parking for that section, so. Verify something too. I'm not in full agreement on. The parking. Every residential unit in a multifamily, we find only one parking place. To, this from a a use factor. And I'm not, I know what the code says, but I believe practically. It doesn't matter whether it's the two and three bedroom condos we're proposing upstairs. I couldn't get away with one parking. And I couldn't get away with it functionally in a two bedroom, two bath apartment. You know, couples. Each person has a car, you know, so that's just a a difference of opinion. And we have enough space to provide those parking. And our interest is in having a very functional development. And I don't think it would be functional with one parking place per unit. I do believe our stormwater plan works, it's in your package. It's certainly very preliminary, but it pretty much shows where the flow needs to go. Show the area of the dry well, it'll accept more than enough water for a hundred year flood plan. I believe the utilities will work with a few adjustments, that was one of the main goals in this plan. Was to not tear out and remove pretty valuable. Some in the range of about a million and a half dollars worth of infrastructure, it just seems wasteful to do that. So, and we're fully aligned with a proposal to. Bring the gravity feed sewer under the highway, connected to where Joanne has a plan for. The River Village project to bring that sewer line to a manhole at the highway. Water service. And Joanne will be part, Joanne and Lon will be part of the process with this. I believe that we have enough water supply. When it comes to fire flow, I think it's gonna be short. Because Vista Park. The three fire hydrants associated with Vista Park across the street barely made flow. To be. Providing the flow that was required. So there are other opportunities with storage and such, and even some upgrades. So I just think that for tonight. We feel as though we have enough understanding of the utilities in the ground. That we're happy to move forward as long as we know basically what we're working with. That you know, last meeting. You know, this is a completely rearranged new plan compared to the last one. And before we can get into really in-depth study. For all of what needs to happen here, we need to understand, are we in the right direction from a density use? Mixed use, number of units. The conversion of commercial, some of the commercial to residential. I believe what we're proposing, it's right at a sixty forty split. From what was originally proposed on the original lot three P U D, it was ninety two thousand square feet approved. We're right at about a forty percent commercial. That we're maintaining, and if you look. Not right at this point here, but if you look closer to these buildings here, the whole bottom floor. On this area right here, we're parking this one. This is all re- retail frontage, retail frontage, retail frontage. They're four sided building, so in the square footage that we have there. We have an exceptional amount of frontage. So. I think it's the most. The best use of commercial space for what I believe are the needs going forward in Ridgway. Which is probably mostly restaurants and probably some coffee shop, some retail. But. The actual square footage can be divided up in many different ways because of so many frontages. Most commercial buildings only have a one street front. Then we have three and four street frontages, so just to give you an example. This is as long as the block between Mary and Cora Street on Clint. So rebuilding, you see. Well, the arts building down to Father Cora's building. At that same distance. So we have this frontage of that, this frontage of that, this frontage. This frontage, this frontage, and these frontages in here, so we have a. It's about as maximum of, of frontage as you could possibly get for retail, commercial use. And we think it's the best plan going forward when we're trying to find more housing. And just let me know, this, these two buildings here, these also have commercial space in them. To fit into the town's desire to see mixed use. These buildings don't. I didn't think this was appropriate for. Mixed use commercial. I felt employee housing. Affordable deed restricted, whether the rentals or purchase. Were open. We want to meet the town's requirements for. Deed restriction and try to help with housing. That's the goal of these 32. What we are proposing is free market rentals, two bedroom, two bath. These two bedroom, two bath each, every bit of this we propose at this point. That we retain eight of these units for our employee housing. And eight units here, we have a total of 80 units of residential proposed. So eight units here, however the town would like to use. In whatever format. See. Let me look through a couple of things, thank you.
Preston, could you go back to the elevations, so the film, since Joe's been showing.
Yeah, there you go, and just to be clear, these, these examples, and it's. Me, I feel like this is a cartoon architecture, we will give much more of a thought. And the main aspect of these is that from this, oh, first of all, this is all commercial store frontage. All of this. And obviously, there's way more elevations. Down the side, the backside, this is just to be representative that we're looking for. You know, a little decent quality. Retail, commercial space, pedestrian, courtside. Dining, hangout. Coffee shops, whatever seems to be the need. Every one of these. Market rate condos up here, every bit of the volume steps back multiple times. If we get any further with this, we'll do 3D perspectives and models and all of that, so you can really see. The quality of design, it'll be there. And also keeping us away from too much straight up vertical with three stories in a pedestrian space. We don't want pedestrians to feel like they're walking in a cave or a canyon. And we think we can achieve that with these stepped back forms. I think we have an, an abundance of green space. I think all the utilities are solvable. I agree with the town that there needs to be a pedestrian crossing. And I personally, I don't see a underground tunnel working. Cause I've been working around that area ever since the Sunrise building. The water table is, you know, seven feet. I don't think there's any way we're going to get a tunnel up there. So. I'm certainly personally aligning more with a nice rusty bridge, you know, with coming over the highway. Part of this project can, working with the town, we can come up with ways to get it built. There has been discussions of an SID, Special Improvement District. For some improvements that need to happen on that side of the highway. And we're on board participating in that. And there are other developments on that side that can help contribute to it also. So. We're in line with just fixing that parcel and having it become, instead of stagnant for 30 years. We would like to see it become a viable part of the community.
Thanks.
So unless, I think that's all I would have to say at the moment. And I do, I hope you guys understand, I have a lot more work to do, TJ and staff, everybody. And any thoughts?
I like this layout way better than the other ones.
Well, listen, thank you, it came from meeting with you guys, so.
Yeah.
Thanks for the help.
Just looking, my first reaction was. That I, I just enjoyed that you put. The green space, open space, we put it around kind of that outside areas. So, um, so there's more flow, especially for the one lane to walk through. I also like that you put the, the highest buildings in that, in the middle, instead of the outside. I like that you left room, I take it the dry well is where.
That's green space, and that's what we have, that'll be about two and a half foot deep from finished grade that's there now. And that's all, and I think, at one point, I think I was talking to TJ, and I. Conversation came up how we can incorporate, not just the kids park area that we have designated. But how, how you make fun out of the little slopes and everything, some bunch of stuff. Larger kids park, because the chances of this really flooding is. Pretty miniscule. So this kid, this area becomes, you know, a great public space. That somewhat marries this commercial space. With the whole element of everybody else, this department, one A and one A. That everybody over here and the condos is always a corridor of green space. Coming into this park. The park can be open to everybody in the community, really. But mostly used by probably condos and Vista Park and us. But this is a pretty large area. This is a football field in distance.
And can you show me where the, um, lift station?
The lift station right now is right there.
Okay, so.
And that's going to have to go, I know that it's a priority of. Joanne, for sure, town engineer to basically. Get everything on gravity fee, it cuts the town's cost of maintenance on that lift station. The lift stations actually in good order, I think it was replaced about three years ago. So, part of the reason why I ended up putting so much green space over there. Cause I wanted to leave enough room. I didn't know when this project was going to start across the highway. But they're making progress, so I believe that they'll be. Before winter approaches, they're going to be their manhole. For this whole development to connect to. Will be ready by spring. So it's exciting for us, but I left this all open over here, partly for that reason. Partly to create, you know, more open space, there is some parking here. What we can landscape this to minimize it, we just, you know, round level parking. We can even fence it if we feel like that's. Desirable. Anyway, I hope that answered your question.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I was just surprised on how much residential was compared to the commercial. But I understand why you guys did that, that way. I was just concerned like everybody else about the commercial, and I was kind of hoping, because I saw. It mentioned on the original one, was that you could put a hotel or motel on there, and so.
I guess zoning would allow that, but that's not our intention.
Yeah. That was.
I feel as though the, the people that are coming in now. Into our area, they have the money. And I feel as though this is a good way for them to help us, maybe, we can have some expensive units, it'll help support. The affordable rentals, and this is one of the only ways you can do it. Well, the blue you, all of these that I'm proposing, or we are proposing, that this is 32 units of what I call market rate affordable.
Because they're tiny.
Yes, the size limits, the cost, the value, all the. These. Our employee housing service is commercial. And such is. Town contribution somehow to, however you guys want to work it out, there's basically multiple ways. And we got David Reed on board, probably can provide some magic formula to work with you guys. But it's, it, I'm a proponent of the town owning a piece and owning units. Cause it really secures them, but for us, it, that's not. Not a question, or we don't. Don't prefer it any way at, at all. I basically think that it's your best interest to own the units, but if you want to just have them deed restricted, that's okay too.
So what would happen with the, um, the property there now, where they have the mailboxes?
We would set up new. A new facility for that, and that would allow it to be in one of these commercial spaces right here. Something kind of central to all of these, and Remax. Those boxes are the little post offices right here, and we put it here, in one of, probably back in here. And we have other spaces where to put it, but I, I like to draw people. From their mailbox into a commercial center, it's just, you're walking about. Go get some coffee, groceries, pick up your mail, so I'd like it to be honestly part of the commercial. Commercial space that we would donate gift. That space.
Um, I don't think I have any questions, I'll save my comments for when they're done. Good for him.
Thomas, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, not at the moment, but thanks for asking.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I believe I will now open it to public comment. Anyone like to comment on this application? Come on up.
Jack Petroselli, 540 Marion Overland, I think it's a fabulous plan. I like the density, I like the open space, I think we need the units. I think it's, uh, to create 80 units, that would be fabulous right now. I just don't think it's the correct site, but I wish that this was the city market that's south of Montrose. And if we were ever to replace the market we have in town, this would be the ideal site for it. So if this is developed as proposed, where would we put a market? This is the largest track in town that's owned for it, so would we put a new commercial site out by Orbis? Or on the other side of town, up by the old high school? So I think that it's important that this stays commercial because we need it, and everything else in that subdivision now is already. Morphing into residential, and that's a concern, so I think if we were to take the whole Ridgeway USA. And what lots are available, you'll see that a substantial part of them are moving towards residential. Which puts more pressure on this to stay commercial, and that's my concern. I like the development, I think it's well thought out, it's well planned, I just don't think it should be on this lot, it's a lot, I think there's a lot you can save. For the future use, thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Any other public comment?
The hammer is for Shay, go ahead.
All right, go ahead Shay.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you so much for your time, thanks for this meeting, thanks for all of your hard volunteer work, you guys are awesome. Just want to share a couple of comments, and I'll try to make it brief. Um, I appreciate what the applicant has done here in terms of responding to. Some of the comments from the last meeting, but I feel like it still kind of missed the mark. I am in somewhat agreement with what Mr. Petroselli mentioned, that, you know, this, this site is. Critical to the town, and I have a lot of, um, kind of ideas about that. So one, just wanted to mention that, uh, keep in mind, PUD approvals are purely discretionary. If the town and the applicant don't agree, that can, it can be denied. Uh, this is something that we do through negotiations, which it sounds like the applicant is willing to, to have that conversation. Per the criteria for kind of approval or not approval on, or sorry, denial for sketch plans. I think overall this really is not in conformance with the master plan. Our master plan calls for this property to be primarily commercial uses. As Mr. Petroselli got to residential is supporting uses, that is not the case with this proposal. We talk a lot in the master plan about protecting land in the county, the ag land in the open space. We don't need a site, a nine acre site in the middle of town to be about half open space. I actually feel like we could use a lot more density on this site to really make it active, really provide. Jobs for the community, provide the services that the community needs. There are studies and reports that the town has done, it talks about the leakage, talks about things that the community wants. The staff report hits on a number of these other items, but I really think, you know, matching Ridgeway's character. The connectivity, I don't really see how this actually connects to. The neighboring developments. The gateway, I think all of the views from the outside of this property, looking in, are looking at parking. The highway fronting commercial is actually parking fronting commercial, it's not, sorry, parking fronting the highway, not commercial. Those small six, 700 square foot commercial spaces on the highway are just missing a major opportunity. To where commercial could go in. I think, um, other, the other kind of criteria for a sketch plan is the public costs, inefficiencies, and tax hardships. I just, again, this is a prime property, I don't think there's enough density. But it's not even needing the density that is called for in the master plan. There is. Kind of, it, it just feels a little bit uninspired. I think Ridgeway is a creative community, it's a beautiful mountain community, and I, I still feel like there can be more that happens on this site. To try to offer some recommendations of where I would approve and not just be negative. I feel like, um, build on that town center concept, so instead of it feeling like this private inaccessible. Square in the middle, make that a road through the middle, make it feel like a little mini downtown. Where cars can come in and park on the street, and you have a street, and that's where people hang out. That can still work over the existing utility easements, then you can front your building on roads. That can still work over the existing utility easements. Then you can front your building on roads. You can front it on the highway and still have it be accessible. I view the kind of multifamily higher density residential being on, I guess it's kind of the north. Oh, I guess it's really the north part of the property, kind of where the surface parking lots are and maybe building A, that feels like higher density residential where you're closer to the Pondos. You're closer to Vista Park Commons and then your commercial is on Hunter Parkway. I see the the affordable housing sites actually just being dispersed through the units. I think segregating those to a corner lot is not how we do that anymore. I think there's a lot better opportunities for travel and access, like I'm thinking of the new houses being built and the the folks in the Pondo. How do you walk over here? Well, you walk through a sea of parking, maybe on a sidewalk and an indirect route and get through parking to get anywhere to any of these businesses. And to go from business to business, like from the red buildings to the blue buildings, you're walking through parking. If you have a downtown like cross streets, you can do it all on the street and all on the public. I think some of the green space just feels a lot like dead open space to me, like it won't be utilized. It will just take water to maintain it, work money to maintain it, which may not be necessary or help the affordability of the property in the long term. Limit the driveways on Red Cliff Drive was four right now. That's a lot. I think maybe two would be adequate. And then it feels a little bit like I I I struggle with how to say this because I know I've been in the position, but I feel like maybe this is something that the town can try to help like facilitate a visioning session or help work on a kind of sub area like master plan for this. I just feel like there's a huge opportunity in this site that might be missed if we don't participate in the development of this. And the PUD as it stands today is not very desirable either. So I think that is all I have to say, and thank you very much for your time.
Thanks Shay. Anyone else on Zoom want to comment, public? Anyone else in the audience? Can up can do public comment?
I think it's a term using by not to. We can, we can always, after we we can always open it back up if we need to, but we're looking for public comment right now.
Any other public comment? I will close. What?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Oh.
Yeah.
Is that Andrew?
My apologies guys, it's Andrew Coburn. I was just trying to unmute myself. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'll make it quick. And I know it's been a a long meeting here, just a couple of additions to what's been said so far. I I want to just say thanks for the opportunity. I have my two cents. Joe, thanks for taking another crack at this. I think there's a lot of positive changes with what you've done. And I I won't hit on all those because I think that the cons outweighed the pros and others have pointed out the big ticket items. I just want to underscore the fact that I I I think that this issue of replacing commercial place space of residential in this particular location is is bad idea. Especially at the scale we're talking about. The existing final plat, I agree, is not desirable. However, it does propose ninety two thousand square feet. The applicant did note that that's probably not realistic. I would agree in the current environment, that's of course not realistic, but this is the last best place for commercial. It is at the only light in the county. And I would urge the commission to think about this location in the same vein as the master plan and and think about this even further to fifty years out, to sixty years out, seventy years out. This town is going to continue to grow and it needs more jobs. Otherwise, it will continue to move towards being a bedroom community for retirees and people who don't have jobs or people who are commuting from elsewhere outside of Ridgway, outside of the county. I I would, although maybe outside of the design, it seems to me that most likely the applicant is sort of looking to, you know, ask data, sort of sell the residential, help finance the the project, but the the commercial is likely somewhat speculative. I I would encourage the applicant to to really go back and look at the reports. Do public and private outreach to businesses if there aren't already pre-lease commitments. And think about designing this in relation to what might be needed. Think strategically about the phasing to make this project pencil over the long haul. It is a big site. You're never going to be able to do it all at once. And to really put the the legwork in on the front end. You know, we can, we can just look in town today and and of course you can look at some of the vacant commercial and it and it's, not all of it is viable. But I also think that the design here is not amenable to attracting the type of business investment that the community needs long term. I would encourage the applicant to maybe even, you know, look at other examples in mountain towns of sort of town center development. Talk to maybe other designers who have done town center development. I think there is a way to skin this cat in a in a much different fashion, even with the existing even constraints and infrastructure issues. But the big picture is to and and I work in housing. I I, you know, it's hard for me to even say it because I know Ridgway needs housing like crazy. But you make commercial the primary focus. And for sure, don't put residential in the in the fashion that is proposed here against the highway. Nobody wants to live on the highway. Businesses want to be on the highway. They want high visibility locations. I think that's good for the applicant's bottom line. I think it's good for the community. I think it's good for residents and visitors. You know, the thing that is heard all the time is what's missing in Ridgway is goods and services and there's a laundry list of them. You have market studies pointing them out and the leakage that goes to Montrose. And this is the place. So I guess to close, my recommendation to the the planning commission is to not approve this sketch plan. I think there's just way too many things that aren't aligned with the master plan, aren't really aligned with the zoning, aren't really aligned with modern design principles. And if you approve it now, even with the the laundry list that's in the staff report, I think you're going to end up going back and forth. A lot of times it's going to be frustrating to the applicant. It's going to be frustrating to the commission. And I think, you know, this big of a parcel is worth taking a really hard look before you move anything forward. So with that, I'll close and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I will now close public comment. John?
Well, I I guess I would start by saying, as others have said, that I really thank you guys for the effort and the obvious thoughtfulness you put into this this new proposal. It's so much better than the first one. It's hard to even compare the two. But at the same time, I have to say I'm I'm a little surprised that the the few public comments we had so precisely mirror my my feelings. Lot three is just, it is very key to the future of Ridgway and to have it be turned into primarily residential like this just does not make sense. And I I totally agree that to make the affordable housing slash employee housing off on its own corner is is twentieth century thinking, not twenty first century thinking. One are more fortunate, affordable housing next in with all the other housing. You don't want to segregate that. I feel like you kind of missed the, one of my major points from the May meeting on the the units closest to the highway where sure, there's some commercial there, but to put all those very tiny apartments right up against the highway like that, just, it just doesn't make sense. I imagine living in those those units being, you can't escape the highway sound. They're so small and you can't go to another room and escape the highway ones. That that this lot is so obviously for commercial. Sure, maybe not ninety three thousand square feet, but it just, this needs to be commercial and and I I don't buy the argument that it sat dormant for twenty, thirty years because there's no market for commercial. I think there are a lot of different factors into why this thing has never been developed. I don't think I need to give you my theory, but it's it's just so clear to me that this should primarily be commercial. And yes, work, live work is 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 twenty first century thinking and it needs to be live work, but it also needs to be the place where the town of Ridgway has its commercial core beyond the the downtown commercial core for future development, for the future needs of the of the future residents of Ridgway. So I, for now, I just, I feel like you made a great second effort, but it's still it's it's just misses the mark for what this lot really needs to be.
Yeah, that's why I was surprised they didn't have more stuff like that hotels, a motel or coffee shop or a market or a laundry mat, the stuff that we really need here in our town. And I thought that along the highway, that would be a good place. And like, somebody mentioned Andrew, I think that we're not going to be, or Jack, that we're not going to be able to build that. You know, down the future, if all that lanes take. But I do, I do like this design. I think that you guys spent a good deal on it. And I, I mean, like Jack said, it's a, it's a good design, but probably not in the right spot.
Yeah, I can, I can concur with a lot of the comments. I'm not, I'm not a fan of the separate affordable housing. As we mentioned in the last meeting, I'm not a fan of the residences up next to the highway. I think it's a great design. And and the whole city market twist that Jack's around is not in a certain way, I think, kind of happened there either. But I think there are ways to capitalize on this commercial development area. There is still another question that I continue to request some information on. If this area went away as general commercial, where does that leave the town? In general, commercial capacity, what do we have?
As far as vacant parcels that are zone, general commercial?
Yeah, or a percentage basis or area basis or something, I mean. This, this is a common, common line I get from from the staff on well, this is general commercial and we need to be careful about turning it into residential, but I don't have a grasp on if this went away as general commercial, where where we exist, where we have general commercial silver, how much?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I mean, sorry. I mean, it's a good question you posed, and I know what you're getting at is putting together some sort of map to depict what you're talking about percentage wise. And it's been on the list. We just haven't had an opportunity to do that. But at the end of the day, there's not a lot left. So percentage wise, I don't know what that comes out to, but based on the conversation, this is a big parcel. And if it were to be undertaken in the way it's proposed, again, you're limited beyond that. And the whole conversation that planning commissions had, I've heard it at the town council level, and it's definitely been at staff level. TJ already talked to it earlier, it may have been talked about up here, but I know Shay and Andrew mentioned it as well in their public comments, but it's about it's imperative that a that a community maintain a balanced portfolio, right? Residential, commercial, industrial, and that's it's imperative that everyone be conscious of that. So that's, that's what we're trying to drive home. But in terms of percentages and a map, we don't have that currently, but you drive around, you can get it to pitch.
And and I would add that it, even aside from actually having a a percentage number to look at, the fact of this lot being the single biggest lot of GC that we still have left is the is the crux of the matter. I mean, I I definitely agree with what Jack Petroselli said that, you know, at some point in our futures, we're going to need a a bigger, more serviceable market for the community. And this would be a logical place for it. It's been proposed even after the city market. There were, I can remember a number of signs that were up on that property. Regional market coming soon. And, you know, I I, like I said, I think that the challenges of getting this property developed have a lot of different puzzle pieces involved. But this is the last big piece of GC we have that I believe we need to make sure we don't let go into this kind of development of of largely residential. And then even the the commercial that is proposed here is more the kind of commercial I like to see downtown than what I'd like to see here. So I I think it's a I think Jack Petroselli put it really well is it's it's a beautifully designed project. It's just in the wrong place.
Thomas?
Thank you. I didn't think as strongly about it until both Andrew and Shay chimed in on a lot of those things. And I I really feel that similar to everyone else, I think there's a lot of really constructive comments going around right now. I think there's an amazing amount of potential here. I don't think it's at the point right now where that's being realized, especially based on some of the comments. I think that there's definitely some rearranging that could happen. I think there's could be, you know, a little bit of shifting within in this balance that we're talking about between the amount of housing and and commercial. I don't think any of this is unachievable. Unfortunately, it means in my mind that the developer has to go back and spend more time to work on it, but I I think there's room there for those things to kind of work themselves out. And I the the only thing that kind of just grabs me just visually when I look at it from above and and the overall site plan that I'm still struggling with is that it it is a bit of a rigid design and I I think that even based on on the the shape of the the lot and the different access points and and so forth, that if it had a little bit more of an organic arrangement to the streets and so forth, again, I think it was John was saying, you know, to encourage this idea of a core. Maybe that was Shay, I don't know, but you know, something where there's a little bit of a core main street that you could encourage through some, you know, a little bit more again, or organic arrangement rather than the relatively rigid orthogonal arrangement of those four buildings, which, you know, to me looks like something I would have seen. I apologize for saying this, but you know, something that would have been done more in in the in the seventies or maybe, you know, even, you know, have a lot of concrete, big buildings, you know, arranged in 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 such a way. But I think today something more organic or, you know, a mix of of the the parking interspersed with green spaces and trees. And and again, also the the affordable housing's got to be integrated. And I will reiterate also, I think a lot of good, strong comments regarding the location of the housing. And I do agree that it should be probably skewed to towards the side of the Pondos and have more of the commercials skewed towards the opposing corner, which would be probably the the southwest corner. And just arrange that based on vehicular circulation and the way we would all see that that lot being used. But great comments tonight. I hope that the developer can encourage to encourage to go ahead and use some of those. And I think that's about all I have to say, but I I still think it needs definitely some some reworking, but encouraging nonetheless. Thank you.
Thanks, Thomas. Anyone else on the commission want to weigh in?
Anyone else on the commission uh want to weigh in?
There's pretty much consensus.
But if so if we say no, do we give them a recommendation? I mean, I think that's part of the comments.
Yeah, I think they've they've heard the comments.
There has to be a reason if we're if we're not approving this. Uh, as being a specific
Yeah.
Reason cited. Um, I think in the staff notes, the number twenty two speaks to what we've been discussing.
If anybody doesn't have any more thoughts or comments, are you ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Well, I will uh I will move that we deny the lot three to build Ridgeway sketch plan um, on the grounds that um as is laid out by both our comments up here on commission and several of the public comments we've got, as well as uh, comments in the staff report uh primarily the uh, as as um, shall mention, uh, number twenty two. Comment number twenty two on the staff report talks about this P D is originally originally intended to be a commercial development. However, the project proposes a significant change in the land used to be residential. This is a trend occurring throughout town with land reserved for commercial uses being developed, residential units. Additional townwide analysis analysis should be completed to understand the impacts that this change in land use will have on local employment opportunities and future financial sustainability. Um, as well as that major concern of mine, um, I also feel like the um the island of of workforce, uh, de- restricted workforce and de- restricted housing uh needs to be would need to be incorporated into the design more more organically and spread out um and that uh uh, hopefully, if if the applicant wants to come back, it will have um it will be a proposal that includes significantly more commercial specifically aligned to both the highway and under parkway.
Karen, ready? Commissioner Elmason?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Meyer?
Hi, Mayor Clark.
Hi.
Chairperson Montague.
Hi.
Thanks for your efforts. Potential, there's lots of potential.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, sure, you know, I appreciate. I have some difference of opinion, but of course, I think the main thing is is trying to understand whether you want a pedestrian friendly kind of commercial, you know, spaces or vehicle centric. And I don't see the two working as you're describing. I'm I'm trying to, you know, leave this meeting with possibilities.
It's always it's always a balancing act, right?
Yeah, and so I'm I'm you know, I I it's such a shift from where we have been, conversations I've heard in town about over time, I could be behind the curve, but not such high density, not such, you know, uh, I it for me, I feel like I'm getting a a confused message is all. And I understand that happens in progress. You know, we're all looking for the best opportunities for the town. Uh, you know, it's just kind of challenging is all I mean, I we can we can do town center. I I have built a lot of town centers. I used to build twelve hundred homes a year and I've done lots of commercial and town centerish. I just didn't think the town was even ready for anything like that, but I guess you are.
I'd like to say, I would just, I don't I don't know that we're talking town center. I think that that it's it's from the sort of thirty thousand foot level, it's that the the emphasis of that lot and the size of that lot, the location of that lot really require that that underlying G C cell
Yeah.
be honored and that there be primarily
So do you?
Opportunities for some large scale commercial. Because we don't know what we're going to need in the future, but we have a pretty good idea that we're going to need like, for instance, a site for a market.
Um, and you know, that that is
Doesn't have to be town center. I think
Yeah.
Um, it's it's not the town center, but it is, it's sort of the regional town center because it's the other side of the highway. Um, so that that's where the balancing act comes in.
Yeah. So with fifteen, twenty thousand square foot market space, let's call it natural groceries, Whole Foods, Trader Joe's. Variety of those kinds of things, but not just the market, but
I mean, Mayor, yeah, or sure, yeah. Um, I think there's a real opportunity here, Joe, uh, to do something to the effect of what Shay and maybe Andrew were talking about, a visioning session.
Yeah.
Or uh, some sort of collaborative community engagement effort to really figure out, not just what the planning commission and town staff
Yeah.
are really thinking based on the guiding documents we have in place, but community members, you know, like standard community members on that side of the highway, on the side of the highway. Uh, I don't know quite what that looks like, but uh, I love that idea and that suggestion. I think it was by Shay. Um, perhaps that's something that you might like to pursue, get some input, again, not just from this forum, but from others. Help you hone in on uh, a future proposal. That makes sense?
Yeah, and there's lots of possibilities. And I guess that's probably one of the only ways to get enough information to jump off from, which are basically it, you know, the information I hear and I get and people comment on, you know, there was a lot of concern about being too close to the condos and leave more green space and then no, we want more density and it's it's confusing is all. And I feel as though if you looked at that plan and I'm not proposing, you know, we're done with that plan. But it had plenty of pedestrian connectivity with green space and if I think I get it that this is just my elementary drawings, but I it's challenging to move into the engineering, civil engineering that's required for this piece. It's because so much exists. And we also had the discussion that it would probably be pretty wasteful to tear all that out. And if we're looking at streets that wind through there to create this more organic. You're talking about tearing out all the existing utilities.
I I think you're, I think you're reading too much in comments that
Okay.
That you're, I don't think we ever said that we want a bunch more green space. There were comments at the original meetings talking about vehicles. And I think you read that as meaning
Well, and and we say it's and green space setbacks from, you know, I don't want to, you know, I'm not here to like make anybody wrong or debate.
Well, I just I just think you have a a flawed understanding of what we said before and what we're saying now. I don't think anybody's suggesting that there be a windy curvy, organic road. I think what Thomas said is that that the size and shape of the lot might lend itself, and that was his comment, that it might lend itself to a development design that sort of more mimic the the shape. And and if we look at the existing P U D, it it does that without um, and it, you know, the the building pods are aligned with the road and the edge of the development. I'm not saying you have to go back to that, I'm just saying there's, that's where he was coming from. And um, again, I think it, I I agree with the precedent, maybe the, maybe the best idea here is to have some sort of vision session with the town community members and you guys and some members of the council and planning mission to think about that lot, talk about the ways that we like.
Yeah, because I'd like to really understand exactly, we have to kind of plot out where we're heading to design something physical.
Understand.
And it's just.
Well, when you said about the um pedestrian or or driving thing, it's it's I don't have the answer. It's kind of tricky. I think the only people are walking to that area are people who live over there. Most people I think that live in town don't walk across the highway, right? They drive. And as Americans, everyone's pretty attached to their car, so they have to be some kind of mix of that, which seemed like where you were trying to go with it. But maybe just not the the grid thing, like maybe one of the buildings could sit up there in that curve part right up and that's by a road. But it's not a very busy road, Red Cliff. You know, ma- maybe, you know, just to follow up with whatever Thomas was saying, it doesn't have to wind throughout the
Yeah.
the um, development, but maybe, you know. I'm not a designer, I don't have
And is, and and I guess one of the questions for you guys is is it's approved for ninety two thousand square feet. And there's only so much parking that you can get on the site. And how do we get, you know, more density? I don't, you know, the Shay's comment was more in line and her husband, who's more in line with it, we we needed to have more density than that. Did I misunderstand that?
Um, I I heard her say that too. You have to talk to her to to get a clarification of what she meant by that.
But from a, from a P and Z standpoint and you're, you know, zoning. As TJ said, there is more density allowable there. Under your current ordinances. And I think he, I bet don't quote me on this, or this is just remembering somewhere in the range of about a hundred and sixty thousand square feet rather than ninety two thousand.
Shay has her interest.
Oh, cool.
Okay, go ahead Shay.
So thanks, you guys. Um, wasn't sure if I could speak, but it seems like we're just kind of in informal conversation now. Um, uh, you know, I um, just trying to think of how to say this. Joe, I've seen where your strength is really building and the logistics of how you get these things done and the cost. There are really amazing urban designers out there who can think through all these opportunities and constraints and can um help with that. So just to throw that out there, I feel like that would be someone that you could add to your team that would really help. Um, uh, just understand the push and the pull and find those good mediums and make, figure out where the compromises are and meet all of the goals and objectives um that are outlined. And I think this is kind of the perfect conversation for a, you know, workshop or visiting session. Um, and I'll be quiet now. Thank you.
I have one question for you Shay. It was you or Andrew made some sort of comment about studies that have been done showing what was actually needed in the area from a commercial standpoint.
Yeah, there was a like, commercial leakage study done in twenty seventeen, I believe. Um, I'm sure it's a little bit out of date, but I'm, you know, knowing how small um how small Ridgeway is, you could probably know like what's opened and closed since then. That may be helpful. There was also a lot of public input with the master plan of like, what do you want to see in your community? Um, what's missing, what could be added? I mean, I remember funny comments like, we need a Trader Joe's. Um, but that could be really helpful information. There's also general guidelines on things. I I don't do this much, so Andrew may chime in, but there's general guidelines on like, if you want to build for restaurant uses, you build this many square feet, or if you want to build for these types of uses. Uh, you build those certain square feet. I I couldn't help but think of like, oh, my goodness, there's this now beautiful blue corn candle um, cafe and factory in Montrose that is no longer in Ridgeway because they didn't have their space. So just trying to do that research and understand, um, that might not be a good example. That may have happened for other reasons, but um, trying to understand what is needed by the existing community, what the community desires and really building to that seems like it could be beneficial.
Got it. Have you guys done studies like that?
I have personally, I understand it. I again, I'm not
I mean, specific to lot three, since you've been trying to
Yes.
Put this together.
Yes, I have, and I I again, I'm, I was just trying to keep this application alive for one. And all of a sudden, my buddy Doug is gone and he was my architect and now here I am. I'm trying to move forward. So anyway, the point is, is Shay's right on. Okay, I need some real effective planner and yeah, we'll get there.
Yeah.
Uh, but I thought that we were far enough along to be having the discussion about the density, the mixed use. And I I guess I don't see the center over there being so predominantly like these big boxish, even scaled down. I'll call it a Trader Joe's here and then, you know, big parking lots and, you know, other, you know, whoever, sports authority.
No, I think you're more creative than that. And parking lots should have trees. There's never anywhere you can
Right.
In the shade.
Right.
Little twirpy trees and these little twirpy mediums.
We we probably should wrap this up because we're getting in the weeds, but I I don't think there's any doubt that the town of Ridgeway needs to relook at its parking rags and bring them up to twenty first century philosophy. There's there's a lot we could do better. So um, you know, we we have work to do too.
Yeah.
And we appreciate the effort you guys are making. Um, it's, it's just such a interesting lot and it
Yeah, no, it really is. I guess I'm finally getting a grasp on, you know, what you truly might want. So, okay, I'll I'll go.
Appreciate process.
Yeah, and
It's frustrating and disappointing.
Fifty two years of it, so what's the difference? It's the same. I just, I I don't like leaving a meeting without some conversation about a new direction, that's all. And thank you for the time.
Your honor.
Yeah.
Okay. See y'all.
All right, appreciate it.
Oh yeah, I'm just getting back to my agenda here. I'm not trying to keep this any longer.
Just trying to look at it.
My luckily my iPad hasn't shut down yet. Um approval, uh, can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for August thirtieth?
So moved.
A second now.
Do we need a real call back on that?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Are you ready? Um, Commissioner Elmason?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Meyer?
Hi.
Mayor Clark?
Hi.
Chairperson Montague.
Hi. Um, do we have any other business updates from planning commission members? Um, thank you, everybody who joined on Zoom. Um, I thought there would be more public input, but really appreciate the public input that we got. And it makes it, it it contributes a lot. I think it's, it's just the fact that there aren't more people here. I think their public comment is not valued as much as it should be by the public. We we value it when we get it. So, thank you. Um, any other business? I think we talked about uh, possibly having a special meeting for the planning commission um, sometime either in November or early December, working on with TJ. Possibly having a special meeting for the planning commission sometime either in November or early December, working on with T J, right?
Would, yeah, whatever that schedule feels like.
Yeah, T J, you want to weigh in?
About what? I thought we talked about that. We were gonna.
Reiterating what we talked about last week.
No.
I had a question about a development, development that we approved. Where the A W N used to be or was Light Out Street? Yes, I was just wondering where that was in the process or if it still is in the process or.
I think you referred to iron rail townhomes.
Yes.
I think they're working their way towards a preliminary class.
Okay. Sorry, I heard about all the other projects. I just haven't heard about that one, so.
Hasn't been at forefront, right? But they're working their way through. I don't have a substantive update other than I think they're they're working on getting some. Submitted back to staff soon.
So we'll we'll still see that in the pipeline. You have anything from council?
I don't believe so.
Wasn't there something that you guys reviewed? I don't know that it was an approval. It was a review of the preserve or something?
Oh, right, yeah, they. The preserve had. Couple requests rolling around their. Road right away that goes to the county. And then the fact that they discovered that their lift station location because of. I don't know, I'm not sure if the lift station location was ever approved by staff. They discovered that currency on P and G regs didn't approve where it is on the current plat, so they want. Permission to move that out into the county as well. Council's consensus was that that was. Problematic because we, you know, we need to have control. All aspects of the unit. Maintenance and all regulatory control over something as important as a lift station. Iffy about the road, but the bottom line was we we directed staff to work with. The developer and the county to see if maybe we could actually annex a small portion. Of ground that would include those. The both road and the potential lift station site, so that we would have full control. Our first take was that we were not in favor of any annexation. But after looking at the challenges, we thought maybe it might be okay. So at this point, I think it's. Staff's. Court to work it out with the developer.
And and where are they in the review process? Why doesn't that go to council?
They're a preliminary class, so they.
So they've gotten sketch plan approval.
They actually got a preliminary plan.
Yeah, they're.
Okay. Well, yeah, because I've never heard of that project, so it's before my time. Over, past the shapita.
Yeah.
Yeah, I knew that.
Most of the most of the infrastructure is is in and this is that they're just trying to work out final details before they actually. Go to the next step, which is pre-qualified.
That would come to us to recommend to council. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, it's it's just a lot of trip because it's in it's in the county.
Part of it's in town and part of it isn't.
Right, right. So it's, you know, how do we best manage that? Lift station is actually going out to the county, and so the road, we're kind of, maybe that would be okay, lift station.
Anything else? Anybody? Darla's ready to adjourn.
She says. I'll second Darla's motion.
Thanks.
Maybe adjourn.
Thanks, everyone.